Yeah, good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to call to order this special meeting of the State Library of Kansas Advisory Board on June twenty seventh at eleven AM. I would ask if we have a motion to approve the agenda or any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we allow the board to ask questions of a CKLS representative regarding their proposed adjusted plan.
Okay, we have a request to change the agenda to allow CKS CKLS representative to respond to questions from the board. Is there a second? To that request, second to that motion?
This is Steve, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, then I would ask the board members, those in favor of approval of the agenda with this one exception, this one addition, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Any abstentions? Motion carries, so the agenda is approved with that caveat and we'll move on to introductions. I would like to ask both the state librarian and the board members to introduce themselves. I'll call on Ray to introduce himself first and then Ray, if you will just pass it to the next person on your screen, please, and we'll go go around that way.
I'm Ray Walling, I'm the state librarian. I'll actually pass it to Charles next, since he's the counsel for the agency.
Okay. Hello, I'm Charles Matheus, I'm the general counsel for the state library.
And then Rhoda can pass it on from there.
Hello, Rhoda McLaughlin Ramirez, Cali College, and to your representative to state library, and I'll pass it to Steve.
Steve, you're muted.
Hmm. Thank you, Randy. This is Steve Law. I'm a director of the State Library Advisory Board. I represent the general public and I live in Topeka.
Bonnie, do you want to go next?
Sure, I'm Bonnie Limbert. I am a public member and I'm in Prairie Village.
Tom Taylor, Andover Public Library, representing public libraries.
Anne?
I'm Anne Adrian from Newton, and I represent the public library boards.
Richard?
Richard Brookman, Director Southwest Kansas Library System, representing systems for the library board.
Kim?
Hi, I'm Kim Bee. I manage the corporate library at Blacken Beach, an engineering firm, and I'm also the special library representative on this board.
Sue?
I'm Sue Gerst, State Administrator for the Kansas Board of Regents.
Gloria?
Hi, I'm Gloria DeCock, Director of the Gangwich Library at Ottawa University, and I represent private academic libraries.
Susan?
If you're talking to me, I'm Susan Moyer, and I am with the Dorothy Bramley Public Library in Junction City, and I represent or fill the seat held by the General Federation of Women's Clubs.
Right. I believe that's all of our board members. Thank you very much for being with us and also thank your guests for being with us today. We have one essential item of discussion today. That is the Central Kansas Libraries System Annual Plan and Budget continuation of that. So we've allowing opportunity for stakeholder discussion this morning. We have allowed the next fifteen minutes for that. You'll see from the agenda items, if a stakeholder wishes to speak, we will ask in a moment for you to raise your hand. And then when I call on you, please identify yourself and on behalf of whom you will be speaking. We're asking to limit comments to three minutes each. If we have more than five individuals today wishing to speak, we may limit that to two minutes. And then if we have those that wish to make comment today's, we will call on the speakers one by one. And time notification will be given to you when you have thirty seconds remaining at the end of your time, so.
Randy?
Yes, Tom?
The agenda calls for us to go through our documents prior to public comment. I think that would help frame that discussion later.
Okay, I
Maybe I'm not, I'm looking at the
No, you're you're fine. Yeah, you're fine. I I kind of interpreted it that way, but I had asked Ray about that and we were gonna go, we can So let me consult with Ray, how do you?
That's fine with me. The reason it's like that is that's the way the system, the state library uses orders, documents, it requires them to put somewhere in the agenda. So I wasn't necessarily intended to discuss each document, but if you just want to do that based on the A bullet point, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so Tom, does your committee wish to discuss any or all of those documents then before we move to stakeholder discussion?
Yes, Randy, thank you, just briefly.
Okay.
The first document is is a letter I wrote of our special committee met, and it's an endorsement of the amendment.
Tom, I think we lost you for a minute there.
Am I back on?
Yes.
Okay, so the the first document is our committee's endorsement of the Walling Amendment. Second document was just some recommendations I had. It's not important. I got that document. I wrote that prior to receiving Ray's amendment. Ray, do you want to briefly describe the amendment to the rest of the board?
Or so the amendment looks at how to resolve the current issue before us. It was assuming that the the formulas and the distributions would occur in twenty twenty four calendar year. So essentially it was suggesting to reduce the resource sharing allotment, so by sixty thousand dollars from the tentative budget that was submitted, and add two lines at the end of the grant section that would allow thirty thousand dollars each for Hayes and Salina Public Libraries. That would come with a caveat on when that would occur, when that distribution would occur, as well as noting that it would be ineligible for the processing support that CKLS provides through Ingram if they accepted this processing allowance each year. The following, then it also makes a change to the actual system plan for the twenty twenty four plan that is similar to what I just said for the budget. As we saw in the letter that was submitted by the CKLS Council, that might be a misinterpretation as far as which year this should go into effect, but at least the actual structure of what is being recommended hasn't been changed. It's just when it would go into effect, does that make sense? I should mention then, the other two documents are redlined items that show where the things would be added in the budget and where they would be added in the plan before we had that more recent letter from the CKLS Council.
Tom, are you ready to continue?
Sure.
Okay.
So that was the amendment. Central Kansas Library System responded with proposed amendment of their own. Oh, no, the the next one is just their Central Kansas Library System proposed. And then one after that is their budget, Central Kansas Library Budget with our committee's proposed amendment, but we didn't get the CKLS letter until pretty recently, so we wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask questions of a representative from CKLS about their, about the letter from their lawyer with their their proposed plan. So I hope you've had, everyone's had a chance to look at that document. But if if you have any questions of Central Kansas Library System, I think now would be a good time to ask the questions as as a board member.
Does any member of the board wish to ask a question of CKLS representative at this time? Specifically regarding the letter of June twenty third?
I guess I was I don't understand why this funding couldn't start in twenty twenty four. That didn't make much sense. From the the letter from CKLS, we did hear back from the council of Hayes Public Library asking about that as well. It I don't see any reason why this plan, the amendment, could not go into effect for the twenty twenty four budget. I I guess I'm wondering, what is the reasoning here? The the someone from the system, if you could explain why? Why do you believe you can't or shouldn't do that for twenty twenty four?
Tom, I think there's a misunderstanding. The twenty twenty four system plan is passed in twenty twenty three. In twenty twenty four, the librarians work to meet the standards and then the money is paid out, the money that those librarians have earned in twenty twenty five. And we were just concerned that the the ambiguity would lead to no money in twenty twenty four, and we wanted to make sure then that that thirty thousand dollars would be delivered in, starting in twenty twenty four. Does that help?
Thanks, Gail.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just to clarify on that, the document I'm holding up that you submitted, it's hard to see obviously, but this is the budget that was submitted as part of the submission for this board meeting, at least the June ninth board meeting, as the assumed the tentative budget, it's called CKLS expenditures. The says twenty twenty four proposed in the last column. What year does that really represent?
The budget represents twenty twenty four, the upcoming year, next year. The system plan is approved in year one. The librarians do the work in year two, and they get paid out in year three. We call it the twenty twenty four system plan because that's the year the librarians are doing the work. It's approved in twenty twenty three, so the librarians have a good six months, the librarians and the board have a good six months ahead of that next year to start planning on what they're gonna do to maximize their funding.
Well, I'm not talking about the plan, I'm talking about the budget component.
The budget is for twenty twenty four.
So the money that's in here for expenditures is money that's gonna be distributed in twenty twenty four?
Yes.
And between December, between January first and December thirty first of twenty twenty?
We usually, that's correct, that calendar year, we usually distribute money the end of March, April, and then August. It's pretty confusing.
So I guess what I'm confused about then is based on the grants that are listed in here, it's implying that you're moving towards the new formulas based on the titles of the grants that are in that section. At least that's what I'm reading that.
That's my understanding of the board's wishes. We haven't, that's just proposed and we haven't started finalizing that yet. The budget runs, I know, it's confusing. The budget is for the upcoming fiscal calendar year. The plan is for the year after that. The board hopes that if this plan is approved and the full system board approves the budget in the fall, that we can roll over to this new mechanism as soon as possible.
I have a question.
Yes, Anne.
Um, is this the way it's always been, or is this all new? Because it is very confusing.
This is the way it's always been. We joke in-house that we have to get the salt and pepper and the sugar packets out to explain this three-year cycle.
Right. Does anyone have an additional question for Central Kansas Library System? Okay, if no other board member has a question specifically for them. Tom, do you have any additional comments on the documents?
No, I don't, other than you can see that last document, it does illustrate comparison.
So, thank you. All right. All right, if there are no other comments on the documents at this point, then we will move to the stakeholder discussion time that as we had described a few moments ago. So if there is someone who wishes to speak, if you can raise your hand, excuse me, or someone is, identify yourself, I can see. Let me see, I see Melanie. Melanie, would you identify yourself and on whom behalf you want to speak?
I'm Melanie Hatch-Pass, speaking on behalf of Salina Public Library.
All right, anyone else?
Katie has her hand up.
I can't see them. Who is, who is this? I don't see that person.
Katie Wolf is the Hayes Public Library Board Chairperson.
Oh, there, okay, I'm sorry, Katie. Please identify yourself and you want to speak on behalf of Hayes?
Yes, my name is Katie Wolf, and I would like to speak on behalf of the Hayes Public Library.
Okay, anyone else? All right, if there if there is no one else, then each of our two identified speakers will have three minutes to speak. Ray, is Wolf able to intervene with thirty seconds remaining, or do I need to do that?
I got you.
Okay, thank you, Wolf, appreciate that. Okay, we'll call on Melanie Hatch-Pass from Salina Public, please.
All right. On behalf of the Salina Public Library Board, I would like to thank the State Library Advisory Board for taking the time to consider this issue thoughtfully. Though there are still areas of disagreement on representation, funding, and equity of services offered, we will work on minimizing the impact the change for processing funds places on the health of our library for twenty twenty four. Salina Public Library appreciates the role of all libraries in the state. We actively engage with Saline County's school libraries and are committed to resource sharing throughout Kansas. SPL offers a robust selection of physical and digital resources and draws patrons from throughout central Kansas to attend programs and utilize our spaces. We're committed to maintaining and continuing our wide variety of services for all. We fully agree that libraries of all sizes bring value and are life-changing to Kansans. Thank you to the State Library Advisory Board, the committee, and State Librarian Ray Walling for your work on this matter. We really appreciate your communications as well as your clear and open meetings. Thank you for the additional time and work that you have all invested.
Thank you, Melanie. Katie, are you ready to speak?
Sure. On behalf of the Hayes Public Library Board, I want to thank the State Library Board, State Librarian Ray Walling, and the committee for the time and effort given to the concerns we have raised regarding the CKLS system administration and funds management. The issues are complicated and you've been presented with an enormous amount of information. You have demonstrated a willingness to listen and educate yourselves about the issues and the many different factors going on our conflict. We agree with the statement shared by some of the committee members about the proposed amendments to the twenty twenty four plan and budget. The amendments are a serviceable short-term resolution for twenty twenty four, but the committee has more work to do on the overall issues. We look forward to working with the committee to establish a more equitable system of library taxation, funding, and services for Ellis County taxpayers and the patrons within the CKLS system. Thanks.
Thank you, Katie. Okay. I guess then we're ready to move to item four B. Is there a motion from the member of the board to take from the table to continue consideration of the twenty twenty four CKLS annual plan and budget? Is there a motion?
This is Tom, so moved.
Okay, Tom, we have a motion. Steve, do you wish to second?
Sure, thank you.
We have a motion and a second to take from the table consideration of the CKLS system plan and budget. Those in favor, members of the board, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed to this motion? Please say aye. Any abstentions? Same sign? All right. Motion carries. So discussion from members of the board on the plan or the amendments?
This is Richard.
Richard.
Thank you. Just to clarify, are we looking at the amendment that Ray worked up or the amendment, proposed amendment for CKLS? When we are going to be looking at this new proposed system plan?
Might add something in there. We should have, if there's gonna be discussion of an amendment, we actually need a motion to amend the CKLS planned or budget.
Right. That's my mistake, Richard. I should call for a motion. A motion that includes a statement about an amendment to the plan and budget. So is there a member of the board that will make a motion to consider the twenty twenty four CKLS plan with an amendment or as original?
Susan Moyer, so moved.
Susan, can I clarify, are you moving the approval of the plan according to the state librarian's amendment or to CKLS?
I I thought the motion would be to approve consideration of the amendment so we can have the discussion.
Okay. Is there a second to Susan's?
This is Gloria, and I would, Gloria DeCock, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve discussion of the plan with an amendment. Those in favor of that motion from the board, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed to that motion? Same sign? Okay, so we are then open to discuss the plan with the amendments that have been appro- proposed. Someone wish to speak to one of those amendments?
Let me, Richard, again, I just want to ask Ray, do you see this, what CKLS has proposed, kind of like a reflection of what you proposed? Looks like they're starting in twenty twenty four, like you proposed?
I think it goes back to that issue of which year are we talking about, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five? My proposal was focused on the first year all of the formulas went into effect would be when the the plan or the amendment that I put forward would also go into effect, because I looked at how the other formulas would impact other libraries funding, including Hayes and Salina, as well as other libraries and systems. So according to the letter that we received, really what I was looking at, we're talking about three-year cycles, twenty twenty five. Does that make sense? Doesn't make sense, but does that help clarify, Richard?
Well, it looks like when Gail was explaining how I read it, this still would take effect in twenty twenty four.
Well, that's what the budget seems to imply, but then for the lawyer or the CKLS Council implied otherwise.
I guess I'm interpreting it differently, and how Gail responded to the question was the plan is to begin in twenty twenty five, but the actual budget cycle began in twenty twenty four like you were proposing. So I guess and I don't know if Gail could in, can be asked to answer this. Is she agreeable to, I mean, I guess CKLS and Hayes and all them, have we gotten notification that they are agreeable to your amendment to move forward? Or do we need to look at this one and see if they want to look at this?
Hi, Richard, we did receive a letter from the Council of Hayes Public Library. They did appreciate the amendment from Ray.
Other members?
Starts in twenty twenty four, goes through twenty twenty six with each reduction, twenty twenty seven, then that formula becomes into place. Is one of the things I'm concerned about is we don't, are we going to be revisiting this issue in twenty twenty seven? One of the things I want to remind the board real fast before I give up the area is in seventy five, twenty five, five fifty C to C one, in those subsections. It says the the system has authority to operate the system of library service two and four participate in libraries. Then in seventy five, twenty five, forty seven, a statement of to provide adequate library services to all citizens. One of the things that I've always, my twenty-plus years being in Kansas, is understood that the systems budgeted for the system office first. The services, then what was left over would be considered for grant money that would go back. The actual libraries could not state that we want this funding back. It's just that it's put in, and if it's possible, it goes back. The first the first objective for the system is to operate the system office and services, not to give money to the libraries. It's just if they have the money, they can give money back. And it's kind of echoed in Attorney General opinion seventy eight, two sixty eight. You know, the recognition of that regional cooperation and joint plan and financial of library services on a regional basis was most effective method of improving library services. And then, and this is taken from Stevens Barnes reply to the points that this is not unlike other statutory funding schemes that use pool tax dollars and spend them to provide services in local areas. So the main thing I want to make sure is you know, in twenty twenty seven, this funding issue is not brought back up. The demand for money, which is one of the proposed issues from Hayes was they have to provide a contract of hundred thousand, I believe it was, and then each year after that do an increase or they would pull out of the system. That's not how I always view the systems working and how the state library board supported library services to the state. So just to make sure, I want to make sure this is kind of settling the discussion about funding. This will rectify everything and be done.
Richard, thank you. I'm scared, sorry, was someone else wishing to speak?
I can respond to Richard. Richard, I believe that the amendment only focuses on the twenty twenty four year, but it provides a framework for future years, so. And I I understand what you're saying about three-year plans and stuff, but I don't believe the amendment addresses anything beyond the twenty twenty four, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, someone. But I I don't believe it it answers your your question about, will this come up again? I mean, I don't believe it will will answer that question. I think it'll depend on the proposed budget for next year, but.
Might chime into that since I wrote the amendment.
Please.
Yeah, so I left that up to the board to determine if they wanted to create a multi-year plan for reductions, if that's the way they wanted to go or do something else. Part of the reason I left it to the board was if we resolved the immediate issue, which is the twenty twenty four fiscal year, then it would give the committee time to finish its work and make recommendations to the full board about how to proceed. Granted, they're focused more on governance and other logistical issues, but they might find something or some way of resolving the Of resolving the other? Plan related issues, if that makes sense.
So this is just a short term stopgap. Basically.
Yeah, I mean, I wrote the, there's a possibility to keep going with it, but that would be up to the board.
And I guess. Tom, you've alluded to this. CKLS is agreeable to the short term stopgap. And continue discussions, so. I don't know if we can allow Gail to verbally say yes, or? If that's better, just left with what the council has provided. That's up to the chair, but if they're, all parties are agreeable to the short term gap. We'll move forward with it, what's desired.
Um just to be clear, uh. Central Kansas Library System offered their own. Amendment that is different from the one that that Ray? Wrote and the committee endorsed. So there's two different proposals here.
Then I guess my question now is which? Motion is this for the one Ray proposed or? Is this want to be a dual? Vote to see which one is? Most agreeable to the board?
My hope earlier was when we made a motion that we would actually choose which motion we were going to actually. Put forward like you would in Robert's rules normally and then have the debate about that particular motion. But we're kind of still stuck on both motions at the moment.
Yeah.
But just for clarification purposes, the main difference between the two motions is one is. It's the same amount, but it, we're talking the? Thirty thousand dollars for each library, but it's a one year solution and the other one that's been proposed is basically a three year solution, but taking the same? Structure of the distribution amount for the first year and then the subsequent two years reducing it to kind of provide a transition. Is that the only difference between the two?
That's one difference. The other difference was regards that twenty four, twenty five issue that we were talking about earlier. About and the the letter that was sent by council? Is recommending we deal with that starting in twenty four. I think.
So I would think the answer to that question could be? Answered by the State Library Legal Council, which which is the correct year that this should be started? And is this, is both amendments endorsed by our legal representation or? What what is the opinion on that?
This is Charles Maturis. Are you asking me?
Yes.
Uh could you ask, say that again?
The, are are both these amendments supported in your view as favorable for the State Library? And as opposed to the question when this funding should start, what is the correct interpretation since there's two here?
Technically, it's. We're discussing the twenty twenty four. The next year, so. Um it has to, it has to take place in twenty twenty four. Um I think it's still up near how, if it's going to be a multi-year or one year or what, but? The the system plan is for the upcoming year that we need to approve.
Thank you. Would you say both of these amendments are something that is favorable for or from a state library perspective? I just want to make sure we're covered from that perspective.
I think that's more of a policy question than a legal question, so I I'm not gonna. I'm not sure how to answer that at this point till we have some more discussion.
And? Probably in simplest terms, then it's it's? Time for the chair to ask if there is a motion? From the board member? On? Either Ray's proposed amendment or? The CKLS? Um proposal? So that we can fully discuss or vet that particular proposal. Um and not not mix, mix up the two. Here, so? Is there a motion? To approve? The CKLS twenty twenty four? Plan and budget? According to either the amendment? Presented by the state librarian? Or the proposed amendment submitted by CKLS? In their letter?
Randy, can I re- refer that second? Is there a motion to amend the CKLS plan that is in front of the board at the moment? In either way?
In either way?
Yeah, so choose one of the options and say you want to move to amend the plan? In this way?
Right.
And I might uh different motion?
Who's that, Richard?
Yes, this is Richard again. I would like to combine the two plans. And make motion to combine the two plans, twenty twenty four, start the thirty thousand dollars. Payment with the? Three year reduction. This is what I was concerned about at the meeting last time. It's not just cutting Hayes and Slone off cold turkey, but giving them a reduction. So I would appreciate a blending of these two plans where? Yes, we have the amendment. Payments of thirty thousand and start in twenty twenty four. To each library, twenty twenty five, twenty thousand, twenty twenty six, ten thousand. This way CKLS and these two libraries know what's going on, moving forward when they're planning budgets and that's true. And that is my motion.
Alright, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second for this motion as stated?
Can you repeat that motion? I couldn't hear all of that.
I want to combine both amendments to reflect that? The thirty thousand dollars will be put into the twenty twenty four budget? For the CKLS plan, but then there will be a reduced reduction over the next two years going down to twenty thousand and then twenty twenty six, ten thousand? For both libraries. Because this is what Tom and I kind of asked at the meeting if there could be a reduction over years instead of just a straight cutoff. And then as part of that as well, this would give CKLS and both public libraries? Time to look at their budgets and adjust and move forward in the coming years. And that's what the motion is, is basically combining the two.
This is Bonnie. I would second that motion.
Alright, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Um is there discussion?
This is a three year plan then, right, of reduction?
That's what I'm looking at, yes. It'd be a three year plan started in twenty twenty four.
Okay.
This is Tom. To be clear, we are? We are only approving the twenty twenty four budget.
Right.
If you went with uh Richard's proposal to combine the two? Their CKLS twenty twenty five budget would have to be approved next year. And so? I'm I'm not sure that we can approve phased reductions. Um I don't know that that's something that we can do. I think we can only? Approve? Or amend the twenty twenty four plan?
Uh this is Bonnie. I think that that's a good point. Um. I don't know what our actual rules are for that, but um if it's? Proposed or? Noticed to the CKLS that this is being approved with the understanding of a phased reduction in the future? That could work. Um you know, on city work, you know, when you're capital planning, we look at budgets and it shows future years, knowing that they they might change. And they're still subject to future budget proposals and exceptions, so um. I'm still comfortable with the second, but if it's not appropriate, then I would? Be open to? Removing it.
Request? Advice from the legal counsel? Please?
Charles, do you have a comment?
I will. I'm I'm going to look at the statute briefly. I'll let you discuss and I'll come back to you in a few minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Does another member of the board have? Any comment question, discussion at this point?
Does this assume that the formulas in the twenty twenty four plan will be distributed in twenty twenty four as the budget suggests?
From what I'm understanding, it would be? What you're suggesting in your amendment? That that formula would start in twenty twenty four is just that over the three years you have that reduction.
But that's based on, sorry, Richard, go ahead.
Well, I'm just saying that just makes it easier for these individuals and entities to plan forward. Uh I understand the year to year concept, but? You know, when you're trying to do budgets and future? You kind of want to know what's going to be happening if you can. So I'm not. That's why I'm suggesting the reduction.
I'm not questioning the reduction particularly. I'm questioning the other components of the plan. Because the way I modeled this, the way that amendment was structured was based on the idea that the? Formulas and the changes that are represented in the twenty twenty four plan. The assumption I made was that those were budgeted and distributed in twenty twenty four according to the budget that was sent to us. Um it sounds like that necessarily isn't true and that changes the assumptions of my amendment because it's not just the processing. Allotment we're talking about. We're talking about the materials allotment. We're talking about the technology allotment and other items.
I was still looking at your? Schematic as using those numbers and then just? Be prepared for the next years down the road. And then you get those new numbers and plug them in, but you already know? What's going to be coming out? So I'm not changing your structure, how you devised, how you're doing it. It'd still be that way for twenty twenty four.
Yeah, but that might, I'm not questioning that part of your, what you're saying. I'm just saying. Based on the idea that the plan doesn't start until twenty twenty five. There's a question of when the formula is starting. It's not very clear when the formulas would take effect and the distributions would take effect based on the budget that was submitted. So what I, my amendment was focused on the idea that these reduction, starting reduction would occur at the same time the formulas went into effect. So the new out of district borrower formula, the new resource sharing formula. And that I looked at how that affected the overall picture for those? Particular grants in addition to the population grant. Does that make sense, Richard? It's not questioning the reduction, but I'm asking when does it start? In regards to when the formulas take effect.
That's where I made the comment. It's affecting for twenty twenty four. With those? Computations that you figured out. And I did see if Ray wants to recognize. I saw Gail with her hand up, so.
That's Randy's call.
Yeah, uh Gail has requested an opportunity to speak to us. Um. Gail, do you have a comment you wish to make?
Thank you, Randy. Yes. Ray, we do want to start with the new funding formulas in twenty four. That's what the full system board approved. The whole new funding mechanism with the out of district borrowers and the resource sharing grant. And that's why the budget for twenty twenty four was written? Towards that. It was, I mean, it's still definitely proposed, but it is geared toward that funding for twenty twenty four as you suggested in your letter.
Charles, did you have anything yet that you wish to speak to the question?
Yes, can you pull up the amendment on the screen?
Think Ray is trying to get that.
Yeah, it's gonna take me a minute. Hold on.
Okay.
You see it now?
Yes. Charles, can you see that?
Yes. We were discussing. So we we need to approve the system plan for twenty twenty four. But I think we are discussing? Adding an addendum to put in the details for them for the multi-year plan going forward as an under- memorandum of understanding. Would rage that?
If, I think that would be a way of implementing what Richard is asking to do without? Talking about future plan, like well, I have a future plan in front of us, was putting a memorandum of understanding in place. Is that fair, Richard?
Uh that's fair.
Yeah, because my understanding is you? You want to? Keep pace and slide a hole, but you want to? Undertake a transition and then you you need to have some kind of agreement about how the? The future years are going to look? So the the does that kind of match what you were thinking?
That seems to be the motion for the amendment before us.
Correct.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Uh so is is that in fact part of the charge of the committee? To consider and Tom's committee to consider that? Future going forward? Or or can we deal with that? The MOU that uh Charles is mentioning here? I'm, I was understanding that that Tom's committee would? I mean, that we today were looking at, as Thomas suggested, we were looking particularly at the twenty twenty four issue, but that? Recommendation to the full board? Would be forthcoming perhaps by September?
Uh Randy, um this is Tom. Um the committee um is going to look at governance and structure of Central Kansas Library System next. Um we weren't, I don't think it was in our charter to look at.
This ongoing budget?
Yeah, yeah, no. I believe we were addressing the other concerns? Related to communication, structure and organization.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Charles, did you have any other? Comment on this?
I'll just reiterate what um the regulation said. It it just says? Regional systems of cooperating libraries shall submit annually to the State Library Advisory Commission for Review and Amendment. A program of services and tentative budget? Of the regional system of cooperating libraries. So at, we can, we're here to review and amend? The annual? System plan. I think it's possible to? To do an agreement as a, an addendum to it to, as an understanding, because I know there's, there could be? Trustage issues between different parties, but um? I don't know if that answers your question or not. But?
Just to clarify, Charles, um is that an agreement between the State Library and CKLS? In this case, because it's the State Library Board and CKLS that we're talking about now rather than particular libraries in a way?
Yeah, it's it's the same parties that are part of the system plan. So I mean, it's the State Board and Central Kansas.
That's the MOU between those two parties.
Yeah.
Um.
This is Richard again, and I'm agreeable to changing the wording as Charles mentioned with the memorandum of agreement, Central Kansas.
Okay, so Richard has proposed um. To his amendment. Adding an addendum. To impose this um. Through your structure, is that what you're saying, Richard?
Right, as a MOU, as a three-year reduction.
Okay. Forgive me, I need to follow up with the who seconded the motion.
This is Bonnie, that was me, I would concur with that change to the motion.
Okay. All right, so.
Yeah, ask a question, Richard. Does your amendment, or yeah, does your amendment include the two caveats about allotment being issued at a certain time? I mean, March, March was suggested in the second letter, do you want that as part of the amendment?
I think. January thirty first. I think should be acceptable from your amendment, Ray.
Well, it sounded like that would be an issue with CKLS according to the letter of their council, so that's why I was suggesting if we want to say March instead, that would be acceptable to me. I just wanted to make sure that was reflected in there, if that's agreeable.
I would make that addition as starting payment would be in March then, yes.
That seemed to be the practice of CKLS, right? Cause I understood Gail's comments that it was March, not January. Okay.
And just one payment then, or two payments?
I think the committee was recommending two payments, am I correct, Tom?
Yeah, that was my suggestion is you, you have a. Payments first quarter and then the payment in the third quarter. Based on when the system gets its tax revenue in. I don't, I don't think that they should be expected to pay it all upfront, that's a burden on the system. Um, so I think March is a good idea and then another one, I don't know, we're looking at September or what.
So I would say, yeah, to adjust, to adjust the amendment again to with verbiage of payments to begin. March two zero twenty four as a first half payment. And what's the first, what's the last month of the third quarter? Oh. Is that August? September? Yes, September, not on the September thirtieth, I think, or is there thirty one days, I can't remember. So I'm agreeable to change it to the verbiage that Tom used with his recommendation to those dates.
Bonnie, Bonnie, are you still okay with those changes as the second on the motion?
I feel like I've lost the thread a little bit, can you reiterate? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Basically, the motion is combining the two uh, raise in the systems for the thirty thousand dollar apiece for each library to begin in two zero twenty four. And payments will be made out on, let me get this right, March thirty first. Have one half of the allotment, September thirtieth as the second half of the allotment. And then with the understanding that a MOU will be in place between the state library board and CKLS. Or Central Kansas Library System, that there would be a three-year reduction forward when they're making the plans.
Did that be two votes? Should we vote for an amendment um, on the plan? As Richard just said, and then vote again on the MOU, uh, the understanding. Um, for the next three years. It looks like we're trying to get too much into one vote.
I think that's a really good idea.
I was questioning the council.
That depends on if you want the, the MOU to be an addendum to as part of the system plan, or if you want it to be a separate document.
Is one better than the other? It seems to me to have the, a separate document would be good.
Then the only question is. In the original case, the, the approval of the amended system plan was contingent on the addendum and the terms and conditions in the addendum.
And I will say I'll leave my motion as spoken. With the MOU attached to the system plan.
Richard, does your motion also include the instruction that the, the funding for this allotment for St. Helena? Comes from the resource sharing allotment specifically, as was in my plan?
Yes, that was for per year plan, yes.
Okay, as well as the caveat about. See, Hayes or Salina could um. Decide to move forward with Ingram Processing funded by CKLS if they decide to forego the processing allotment.
Correct.
Just want to be clear, I think it's important to be very clear on what we're voting on. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Of the motion and the second, and I'll go, I'll go back to Bonnie, I want to confirm, Bonnie, you were okay with the.
Yeah, this is Bonnie, I concur.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
This is Tom. I'm not sure that we should have an MOU. Um, for future budgets in the future. Um, the way I see the, the amendment is proposed by Ray, it's a, it's a different structuring of grants. For the system grants and uh. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how compatible that is with a phased reduction. Um, but I, I'm not entirely comfortable with approving an MOU. I'm not sure, I, I mean. I understand what you're saying, it makes a lot of sense, but I believe our role is to approve the two zero twenty four, but. That's just, that's my opinion.
Uh, this is, this is Charles Matiers. Um. The purpose of the MOU is to kind of lay a framework for the future system plans for, you know, like twenty five and twenty six. To give them a direction going forward. The board, the board has the authority to do, do it as a separate document, but. It, the, the purpose of it is to just give a framework so they understand when they do the system plan. In the two future years that it's. This is part of the agreement. So it, it could be a separate MOU between the two parties, or it could be part of this, but. The, they, they have to fit together, is the only issue.
This is Tom again, um. I'm wondering if we could put the MOU on the, on the docket for the September. Uh, full board meeting, that will allow the committee to look into the um. Other issues that have been raised. Personally, I would be more uh, inclined to. I, I think, I think that we ought to. Discuss the MOU later after. Um, in the, in the overall September committee. The full, full board, that is, that will give the committee time to uh, look at some of the other concerns.
Okay, now I thought I saw someone else's hand up a moment ago, is there other discussion?
I agree with Tom on that.
Okay. Are there others, other discussion? Okay. All right, the motion on the floor, as has been restated by Richard, does include the uh, MOU agreement as part of this motion. Okay. Yes, Bonnie.
Um. If it looks like this motion is going to fail due to MOU being attached to it, somebody could make a motion to amend the motion. To remove it, to remove the MOU, somebody would need to second it, and then we'd vote on that, and then we could go back to the original motion.
Right. Good. Is there a motion to amend?
I think what Bonnie is saying is we can vote on the motion before us, if it fails, then we can go back. And put forward the motion without the MOU.
Without the amendment again. Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right. Then we'll go to move to the question. The question is the motion on the floor, which currently includes the memorandum of understanding between CKLS and the state library board about the phased reduction, okay? So those in favor of the motion as stated by Richard, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Okay, so motion fails. As stated. Is there another motion that will be coming?
Can we?
Yeah.
Guys, can we please say each person's name? That voted against so that I can list that for the minutes.
Okay. Okay, we'll do, do a roll call then of those, those that were opposed to the motion, please state your name.
Anne Adrian.
Rhoda McLaughlin Ramirez.
Susan Moyer.
Tom Taylor.
Drive over there when you're done and join us.
Kim Bee.
We're going to El Sol.
Devois.
Gloria DeCog.
Okay. Wolf, did you get all those?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I, I didn't hear Richard, I think Bonnie was. In favor, I didn't hear Richard.
Favor.
In favor, okay, so. All right, but motion by majority, motion fails. So is there another motion from a member of the board? Concerning the two zero twenty four plan and budget?
This is Bonnie. Can I just, I would make a motion identical to the previous motion removing the MOU.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
And I would second that.
Okay, I heard Gloria and I believe, right, we have a motion and a second to consider. The amendment as previously stated excluding the memorandum of understanding, is there discussion?
Just to clarify, is that essential of the motion that's on the screen with the change of the installment dates?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope so.
I'll give a, this is Bonnie, I'll give a verbal assent that that is true.
Okay. All right. Does anyone need any other clarification on the motion that's on the floor or any discussion, any comments?
I guess the only thing I would have to say, and this is Richard, is that. For me to say yes, there has to be an understanding that the MOU would be brought forth as a second motion after this.
Any other? Clarification or discussion? All right, then we'll move the, we'll move the motion that's on the floor to uh. Approve essentially what is on the screen in front of us with uh, except under the caveats, the change of dates. All right, those in favor of this motion. Um. Let's go ahead and um, answer with your name so Wolf can capture that. Okay.
Anne Adrian, yes.
Okay.
Bonnie Limbert, yes.
Gloria DeCog, yes.
I heard Gloria, who else?
Susan Moyer, yes.
Rhoda McLaughlin Ramirez, yes.
Kim Bee, yes.
Tom Taylor, yes.
Okay. Uh, Richard, anyone else? Those, those are in favor? Okay, those opposed, please state your name.
With that understanding of MOUs, this is Richard, no.
Okay. Anyone else opposed? Or any abstention? Okay. All right, that, that motion then carries. The amendment to the system plan and budget, all right. Is there an, uh, is there a motion concerning the MOU?
I move that the um, committee. Include that in their discussions of the organizational structure and that it be discussed at our September meeting.
Okay. Right, we have a motion that the special committee. Uh, consider an MOU is along with their other administrative and organizational structure discussion to present to the full board in September. Is there a second to that motion?
This is Gloria, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion?
This is Richard again, just making a reiteration that, that I think that's a little bit unfair and what we're trying to do here in helping out. This is just a delaying tactic. I think the MOU, as Charles stated, was perfectly fine by passing it now. So that's my feelings, so.
Okay. Is there other discussion about this motion? The motion is that it be considered and brought to the full board in September. There are other questions or discussion?
I would just say from my viewpoint, I don't, I think the fairness is still that it's being considered and that everyone's in the agreement that. Um, a sliding or reduction scale is the best approach, but we're just right now. Um, agreeing to accept the two zero twenty four budget, so yes, and now we're looking forward to the future with the MOUs.
Okay, thank you, Rhoda. Other question or discussion? Anyone else? All right, um, then moving to, moving the question on the floor, those in favor. Of uh, asking the special committee to consider an MOU. Along with their other considerations to present to the full board in September. Those in favor, if you would, again, um, list your name, please.
Steve Wa, yes.
Tom Taylor, yes.
Bonnie Limbert, yes.
Anne Adrian, yes.
Rhoda McLaughlin Ramirez, yes.
Gloria DeCog, yes.
Okay, I heard Susan and Gloria both, so. Anyone else in favor of the motion?
Kim Bee, yes.
Kim Bee, yes, okay. Anyone opposed to this motion, please uh, state your name?
Richard, no.
Okay, Richard, anyone else opposed to the motion? Did anyone abstain? Motion carries. All right, um. Is there any other? Item of business concerning the CKLS two zero twenty four budget and plan that needs to come before this board meeting today? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
This is Bonnie, I had moved to adjourn.
Rhoda, seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed to this motion? All right, board stands adjourned, thank you each and everyone for your time and your thoughtfulness in today's meeting.
Thank you.